Okay, I'd like to call to order the Wacom County Council Meeting for June 16th, 2020. We are meeting virtually. Please, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Bird?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ben Ellenboss?
Here.
Carol Frazi?
Here.
Kathy Kirschner?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have ten sets of minutes that were in our packets. Do I have an entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
Move to accept the minutes.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Yes, Councilmember Kirschner.
I will abstain from voting on the council meeting March 10th since I was not present.
Okay. Councilmember Bird?
Hey Kathy, I think it was last year or the year before and then to, I guess, the Karen gave us kind of a rundown on it. And if we didn't attend a meeting, it's okay if we still vote for it. It's more about voting it into the record than it is about, in that case, necessarily whether it represents what you said or not.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Can you clarify, Councilmember Buchanan, who made the motion to approve and who seconded, please? You're muted.
Councilmember Donovan moved and Councilmember Frazi seconded.
Thank you.
So, were you done with the roll? I wasn't.
I was complete with the roll and it was all yeses.
Okay, seven zero minutes are approved. Next, we're going into open session. Open session is being held virtually via Zoom webinar. Members of the public wishing to speak can access more information on how to join the meeting at www.wacomcounty.us forward slash, and this is all one word, join virtual council. And that will be displayed in a second in the video that we're going to, staff is going to show. At this time, would everyone please, including council, stop sharing video and the council will play a brief instructional video on how to join the meeting. Okay. We will now move into our open session. Go ahead Kathy and call for people to testify.
There are currently no attendees with their hands raised. If you would like to speak during the open session, please virtually raise your hand. Again, just to reiterate, it's dial star nine by phone or mouse over the lower area of your screen to click on the hand icon. Our first speaker is Ashley. Ashley, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ashley Winter. I'm a resident of Bellingham. I would like to address the lies posted on Facebook yesterday about the Bellingham protests in downtown. Kathy Kirschner posted on Facebook, Mayor Fleetwood, Bellingham City Council, where are the police? Why are you allowing the beautiful city of Bellingham to be taken over by outside paid agitators? This is a complete lie. I was there myself. So was Mayor Fleetwood and City Councilmember Holly Huffman. If Kathy Kirschner had been there herself, she would have known that the people protesting were all citizens of our county or of Bellingham, that we were not paid agitators, that we were there for our cause. And I'm just very concerned that anyone without ample evidence would post something like that. I think it incites violence and is against our freedom to protest, our freedom to speak. And I also find it concerning that that post was deleted and from my knowledge Kathy Kirschner's Facebook was also deleted. I just, I think that our, that our politicians should be held accountable for what they say and that that's really all I have to say. I don't, I don't need three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any other attendees with their hands raised. I'll just offer again, if anyone would like to join the open session, please virtually raise your hand. If you're joining by computer, you can virtually raise your hand by mousing over the lower area of your screen and clicking the hand icon. Are there any other speakers? Councilmember Buchanan, at this time, I don't see any other attendees with a hand raised requesting to speak.
Okay, thank you Kathy. At that scene, there's no one else in line to speak, we shall close the open session. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Councilmember Bird?
It has been a minute. Consent, we get to vote in all at once on this individually?
All at once.
Okay.
Plus, anyone wants to remove one and vote on it separately?
Items AB 2020 dash 167, request authorization for the county executive. Do I have to read them all into it?
No, you don't, you don't have to read them all. You can just do a motion to do all of them, or if anyone, like I said, wants to remove one, we can do that as well.
I move, we introduce all of them, or vote on all of them.
Sorry, hold on, Councilmember Brown. The... I move that we introduce items one through nine, plus 11 and 12, removing 10. Those were approved 3-0 by the committee.
So you're moving items one through nine and then 11 and 12, is that what you said?
Yes, please.
Okay. Discussion on that motion.
Well, I'll second it. It needs a second.
No.
I don't think so. It's coming from committee. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll on everything except item 10.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Barry, you're muted.
That passes six to one. Councilmember Ellenboss opposed. That brings us back to item 10.
Thank you. I'll move approval of AB 2020 dash 242, item number 10. That passed in committee 201 with one abstention with myself abstaining.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Is there a second?
No, it came from committee. It doesn't need to...
Thank you. Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Abstain.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with one abstention. Councilmember Bird abstaining. Okay, let's move on to other items from, from natural resources.
Nat, you got me? Natural resources had one item on our agenda today to change the status for terms on the Great Harbor and Portage Bay Shellfish Protection Districts in ordinance amending Wacom County Code 1620. That was approved 3-0 in committee and recommended to the full council. And I so move.
That was revised. There was a revision in committee today. Sorry, need to run the...
Yes. The revised language was emailed to us by the clerk and it was a minor change to line... Trying to bring this up.
79.
Thank you, Ben. Line 79, and that would be the version that we are approving. Everybody has seen that, I think, from the email.
Okay, so discussion on that motion? Okay, let's vote.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Barry used to med.
Oh, back, sorry, back to finance.
Do you want to announce the vote?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, seven zeros.
Okay. Item AB 2020 dash 093, ordinance amending Wacom County Code 132, public records to delete provisions related to exhaustion of administrative remedies. It was pages six through 11 in your packet. That passed in finance 3-0. I so move.
Okay, that motion's on the table. Discussion? Ms. Fraze, you have a...
Oh, no, I just, it originated with me, so in case a request...
Okay. Okay. Discussion on this motion? Please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item was AB 2020 dash 164, ordinance closing the Lighthouse Marine Park Improvement Fund, 362. It's pages 12 through 13 in your packet. It proved, or it was passed in committee 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item was AB 2020 dash 214, ordinance suspending Wacom County Code 1.28 to update the correctional facilities operational standards. It's pages 14 through 19 in your packet. They passed in committee 3-0. I so move.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Donovan, you were first by a nanosecond.
Nanosecond. Yeah, this was something that we got about a year ago from the sheriff's office and it was it was something at first glance that was a bit hard to process, but I, so I just wanted to kind of give a little background here for a few people who are watching. We had code about operating correctional facilities and use of force that was essentially cut and paste. And anybody correct me if I got this wrong, from the eighties or something, I think was the origin of that. Obviously, it didn't match federal court decisions, changes in state law. And the request was from the council of the sheriff's office to get this updated and then on a website where people would easily access it and that was stopped because the funding only arrived in January, the COVID crisis hit. But at the end of the day, I think we're all hoping for is a code that is much more reflective of current and future laws that are coming from the federal and the state government. I think that sums it up. It looks weird if you just read the proposal, but the sheriff and the Law and Justice Committee need more time to sort this out. That's my summary.
Councilmember Bird, then Councilmember Brown?
We kind of say the same thing. It's kind of an important topic right now and I just wanted to make sure that we were addressing it to anyone who saw it on the agenda or was curious why we were doing it. I think Councilmember Donovan explained it very well. And I think some of the things that we've asked for are that these codes and the policies and procedures be put, made available on the website. And while that's in progress, what we were formed of and anyone in the community, community should know is that if you're interested in what those are, you can send in an email request or request and they'll be provided to you so that you have a copy of those as well. Until such time as they get on the website and the updated ones are available. So anything that you want to see is definitely available to you.
Councilmember Brown?
Ms. Fraze raised some good questions and had some requests today, so I'd just like to invite her to inform the public as to what was asked for.
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Yes, I, sort of like what Councilmember Donovan said, just making sure, and Councilmember Bird, just making sure we have, as we go along, maybe starting with the use of force during their policies and as they go along, put it up on the website and make sure that there's more transparency about what we are doing in, in the jail. And one thing that Chief Jones said is that the use of force that they use in jail is the same as the police do on, out in the public. So making that available so we all know what that is and what it looks like. And I think this extra time will be helpful because we'll make sure we get it right and taking our time and getting public input would be great. But that transparency is really important. Thanks, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, it is, that's for sure. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is AB 2020 dash 224, ordinance amending the 2020 Wacom County Budget, request number 13 and the amount of $13,153,598. It's pages 20 to 33 in your packet. That passed 2-1 in committee with one opposed to, I so move.
Okay, we have that motion on the table. Discussion? Being done, please call...
Sorry, Tyler had his hand up there.
It's okay, we'll go with it.
Go ahead, Tyler.
Oh, I just, I was the one no vote on that in committee. And there was a couple of things in there, but mostly the care is funding is one of the biggest ones for me right now. And so I think the level of detail, I wanted to tell the staff and Tyler Schroeder and the executive, I do actually really appreciate the amount of detail that you put into it this time. There was a lot more information in it this week and that was helpful to look at and see how you're prioritizing things. I am concerned, and the big reason I'm voting no against this right now is I don't like the idea of, once we approve it, that there is the ability to basically slot the money wherever and that it feels still like a lot of that decision's been made. And given what's kind of happened with the homeless shelter placement and the previous funding that's taken place, I don't necessarily feel comfortable approving this funding without having guaranteed oversight that every one of those items comes back to us for a second approval as well. So I won't be supporting this at this point in time. As one, and the second thing that I really, at the beginning of the year, I would ask that some additional information be added to each of the supplemental budget request forms that let us know what the funding looked like in each of those funds and how much money was spent, how much money was left in the reserves, where our projected kind of burn rate was going to leave us with the amount of spending so that we could understand where we were financially in each fund as we approved requests that were coming in that were not a part of the original budget. And without that information, especially right now, given kind of what we're running into, I don't feel comfortable approving additional supplemental requests either. So that was my rationale. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yeah, no. Whoa, tricked ya.
Okay, that's a no.
Yeah, that's a no. Sorry, thanks Kathy.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Is my video working for you guys? Because I have my hand up.
Now it's working.
It is working.
But you're frozen.
Your, your hand is permanently up, so that's cool.
And go ahead.
Well, I'm wondering if my camera's working here, real quick before I vote.
It is now.
Okay. So does it only work when I'm unmuted on my phone?
Ben, you're frozen right now. It looks like you took a picture of yourself with your hand raised permanently.
Okay. All right, well, just assume I always want to speak, but I'm, yeah, I'm voting no for all the reasons Tyler said and then some, most notably, I, I want to see an action plan on what triggers us to demo. We saw the demo plan, that's just how you're going to do it, but we got to have a way out of this, otherwise, I don't know, we're just going to keep throwing money at it. No, 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 no.
Carol Frazi?
Or, sorry, Ben, will you define demo for everyone who is listening and doesn't know what that is?
Yeah, demobilization, just how we exit the current situation. Demobilize the, the, um, demobilize the, the unit, the group, the emergency operations center, the whoop, the jail, all the above. Get out of acronym city, go back to regular council business.
Okay, please continue.
Carol Frazi?
Is, is this a conversation we're going to have or are we voting?
We are voting. We are supposed to be voting, so.
Okay, because I'd like, okay, my answer is yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
No.
That passes four to three with Bird, Ellenboss, and Kirschner oppose. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That whole sequence, I lost track of what we just voted on. Was that on item number five?
Yes.
Okay, fine, all right. Have you recorded me as an affirmative? That's correct. Thank you.
I did, yes. We recorded you as a yes.
Barry, I think that Councilmember Fraze had something she wanted to add.
Go ahead, Carol.
I guess it was just that, I guess Councilmember Ellenboss had things to say about the unified command being demobilized. And that's a whole different conversation. And, um, yeah, and we can put that somewhere else. But maybe you were trying to speak before, Ben, or Councilmember Ellenboss, and we didn't see you. But I think that's a whole different, whole conversation we need to have.
Councilmember Kirschner?
I, I think that, isn't that item number four that we just voted on? Agenda Bill 2020 224?
Yeah, it's my number five.
Oh, is it? Okay, mine number four. All right, thanks.
Okay, let's move on. Ben's going to continually have a question, I can tell.
His hand's going to get turned.
Councilmember Buchanan, this is Kathy Holka. If I could just make a brief announcement to Councilmember Ellenboss, since you're having difficulty with your internet as a logistical way to address it, if you could just raise your hand through the Zoom meeting by clicking on the hand icon or press star nine on your phone, then I'll know when your hand is raised and I can alert the chair.
Hey Kathy, I'm, I'm unmuted real quick. I'm going to shut, I'm going to stay on the phone. I'm going to log off my computer, reset my modem and try and come back up, and I'll keep my phone on. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bird, I think you can go to the next item.
Councilmember Buchanan, the executive just activated his camera. I'm not sure if he wanted to add something to the conversation or not, but... No, okay. All right. Thank you. The next item is AB 2020 dash 226, ordinance amending the project budget for the North Shore Drive Edge Water Lane Stormwater Improvements Fund. Request number one, that's pages 34 through 40 in your packet. That passed in committee 2-1. I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion? Mr. Bird?
Yeah, so I was again the no vote on this item. We raised the storm water, or we added the storm water kind of tax here last year and then we raised the flood fund tax with the idea of needing more capital for Lake Wacom and the phosphorus front off and, and the projects that we're doing related to that. And then we also passed towards the end of last year, $400,000 to add some trails and add restrooms and expand a parking lot next to the lake on North Shore Drive. That came out of that exact same fund. And this item here would come out of that fund, but because there's not enough resources now, it's coming out of the REIT fund. And so the, I voted no on this, not because I disagree with the project, I actually like the project, that will probably actually have a, a good impact compared to other things we're looking at and that's worth doing. I disagree with the fund that it's coming out of right now. I think this would have been a more valuable use of resources, especially given the day, the jobs that it would create, than the $400,000 for the park trails and the expanded, expanded parking lot. So that was my rationale for voting no on this item. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Donovan?
I don't think we have staff here on this right now, but that was not my sense of how this was presented, that there wasn't money in one fund and we were using REIT money as some sort of unusual... REIT money as some sort of unusual way that a lot of these projects are generally funded with those REIT money. So I, I don't, I don't think we have Craig on the line here to, to clarify that, but that was not my sense of how that was presented to us.
Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I don't want to infer that, that is a not appropriate way or anything like that. So if that's the way it came across, I apologize. I just, I, I think that this would have been better used in that funding bucket so that this bucket could be used for other things as well. And so, I mean, we're, we're picking where things are coming from and because they have specific, each fund has specific things that it can't fund or projects that it can't fund. And so this would have been great in that other project fund because that's what it's for. That would have freed up the capital in this fund so that we could use it for another capital improvement down the road. That I think would ultimately both of those would, would have a better impact to the economy than adding trails and, and, and a parking lot to North Shore. I also think it, both of these types of, or this project has a better impact on the lake than what adding a parking lot and, and more shores does. I think that was damaging to the lake and adds more phosphorus and it takes us back a few steps than taking us forward like this project does. So that, hopefully, hopefully that clarifies, but thank you.
Other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to two with Councilmember Bird and Councilmember Ellenboss opposed.
The next item was AB two zero two zero dash two zero eight. Resolution requesting authorization to make an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for South Fork Park Trail Development. Pages forty-one through sixty-four in your packet. That approved or was passed in committee three zero and ISO move.
Discussion. Okay, let's vote.
Tyler Bird?
Yeah.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed.
Thank you. The next item was AB two zero two zero dash two zero nine. Resolution requesting authorization to make an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for development at Birch Bay Beach Park, pages sixty-five through eighty-five in your packet. That was approved in committee three zero, ISO move. Now I'll go back and drink my root beer.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please call the
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next is Public Works and Health.
Yes, so in Public Works and Health Committee, we have AB two zero two zero dash one eight four, consideration of citizen appeals of address change due to correction of an address number sequence. That was in pages two seventy-seven to two eighty-nine. And we moved to accept the address changes by Public Works three to zero.
That motion's on the table. Discussion. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just to add to that, we also had a discussion about who should bear the cost depending on who caused the mistake. With the discussion that, that'd be further, at least a proposal to come back and provide for a mechanism if the, if the homeowner was not, was clearly not at fault for the mistake. But that, that's something for the future, it's not for tonight.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Frakes?
I just wanted to say that the motion really, I think, really was a, a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, should I restate that? Motion was to deny the repeal. And pass three to zero. Thanks.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
You're muted.
You're muted.
The next item is from the council committee of the whole. It's AB twenty twenty dash two five two. Resolution inviting other jurisdictions, local jurisdictions to collaborate to improve efficiency for the benefit of our taxpayer payers. Mr. Brown introduced this.
You want me to speak to it?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I lose all my video when I speak, it's just really weird. And one of you asked to speak to bring it back.
Well, just make sure you, if you're going to go to another career, make sure it's radio and not TV.
Yeah, there you go.
DJ.
Yeah, so this was simply an invitation to the other jurisdictions to see if there's functions or departments or resources that we could pull and get effectively more bang for a citizen's buck than, than having multiple jurisdictions have duplication. And they, and the primary example I gave was was dealing with, say, cybersecurity issues, which is requires a considerable amount of talent and resources. And the smaller the jurisdiction you are, the harder it is to defend yourself. So it's purely an invitation to the other councils to have a discussion about this. And if they like the idea, then we can collaborate and come up with specific ideas as to how to save money for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I believe this passed seven zero as far as recommending to the council. So that I would move approval.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next is executive appointments to boards and commissions and committees. AB twenty twenty dash one twenty-nine. Request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Stephen Groan to the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just to follow up on the last one, can I, if, if this wasn't clear, can I suggest that there's a couple that goes out with your signature on, with a copy of this to each of the other jurisdictions?
Sure.
Address to their respective councils.
Yes.
So I will move to confirm the executive's appointment to the Ag Advisory Committee.
We have a second?
Second.
Donovan moves, Frazee seconds, discussion.
I didn't hear that real quick. What was that?
I've moved to approve the executive's appointment of Steve Groan to the Ag Advisory Committee.
Discussion?
Yeah Barry, I need to hit star nine to raise my hand.
Yeah, I can't see any of that. So Kathy is the only one that can see that, I think. But go ahead Ben.
Okay, I just did it to see if it worked. I would like to speak in favor of Steve Groan. He's very involved with all aspects of the ag industry, including organic. His son's an organic dairy farmer. He is an agronomist and I actually made the recommendation to staff hall that he would consider Steve and I'm very happy to hear that he did. Thank you, executives to do.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's call the roll for confirmation.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next up is AB twenty twenty dash one three zero. Requesting confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Todd Tyrell to the Waukam County Appeals Board. Do I have a motion for confirmation?
I move to confirm.
Donovan moves?
Second.
Bird seconds, discussion. Okay, call the roll, please.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
That passes seven zero. Next is AB twenty twenty dash one thirty-five, requesting confirmation of the county executive's appointment of David Charleston to the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. Do I have a motion to confirm?
Move approval.
Bird moves, Frazee seconds, discussion. Please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next is AB twenty twenty dash one thirty-six, requesting confirmation of the county executive's appointment of John Radwansky to the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Compliance Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Bird moves, Donovan seconds, discussion. Okay, let's take a vote.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. Passes seven to zero. Next up, we have four items for introduction. Do I have a motion to introduce these?
Moved to introduce items one through four.
Second.
Got a motion by Donovan, second by Bird, discussion. Please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next up is, under other items, we had, today we had a council discussion and a motion to hold a special meeting on either the afternoon of June twenty-third, following the water work session or June thirtieth, which is an off meeting Tuesday, to discuss the following agenda item. Resolution docketing comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments, AB twenty twenty dash one oh six. And I believe we also wanted to put the budget discussion in that meeting, if I recall.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so though we'd have those two items on that meeting, we just need to pick which day and a time that we'd like to do that. Any ideas? Ms. Kirschner?
I would move that we put that on twenty-third. Is that what you're, the twenty-third was that one of the options after the surface water work group?
That's second.
You're muted Barry.
That would probably be a, a one o'clock start or so, right Dana?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the motion is to have a one o'clock start on June twenty-third for those two items. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hold on Barry, I didn't get my stars nine.
Okay, go ahead Ben.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm going to be out of town on the twenty-third, so is there any way I could do that over the phone? Probably, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, my internet doesn't seem to work anymore, so whatever.
Ben, I don't know what difference it's going to make whether you're in town or out of town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. When COVID hit, my, my provider boosted my speed, so everything worked, and I think that they've unboosted it anymore, so.
Okay, so anyway, the motion to, for the twenty-third at one o'clock, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, that's the end of our agenda. We have any other items of business? What about Councilmember update? Go ahead, Mr. Bird.
I'm going with the updates, sorry. That was one second too early, but.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and roll into updates. Go ahead.
All right, fair enough, thanks. We're all aware of what's happening right now. Protests downtown in Seattle and across the country. We're all aware of the emails that are coming in, Kathy's post today and stuff, and some of the phone calls that we've received and the testimony from earlier. I've been thinking about it a lot lately. I don't like going on Facebook pretty much ever possible here in the last two months. It feels like just it's so hateful and vulgar. There, there's nothing there that could make you feel good about where you live or, or the people that you live around. It seems like it's just, it's it's highly political and, and negative and I just don't see the community that I remember growing up with and the people and, and you know the ability to go over to the neighbor's house and have dinner and meet people that you never met before and that camaraderie and that sense of of community really. It, it's kind of, it's lacking a lot lately. It, it's been bothering me as I think more about it the last couple of days and the more I think about it, the reason I bring it up is because I think a lot of that stems from us, to be honest. And not just the seven of us or the eight of us, but the, but us as elected leaders and they, when we look at how we act and, and how Olympia acts and how DC acts. It's getting worse. You all see it. I mean, we, we all see it, right? I mean, it's, it's evident everywhere. And it's interesting because, I mean, I said this earlier, I mean, I watched everyone campaign. You all watched me campaign. I mean, most of us campaigned with this message of, we want to listen to people, we want to bring people together, we want to hear, you know, the voices that aren't being heard right now. And yet we get here and I don't feel like we're really following through on that. And I know we're going to disagree on a lot of things. And I know that we get emotional and frustrated and angry about those things as well. But I, I can't help but wonder is it not possible for us kind of set the politics aside and really just start working towards? is it not possible for us kind of set the politics aside and really just start working towards those end solutions and those goals that we want to achieve and and start leading by example and showing the community what it actually means to to listen to people that you don't agree with and try to understand why they have the thoughts or the feelings or the ideas that they have and try to compromise in a way that we we can bring them in and engage them even though we don't necessarily agree with it. Does it have to be all about winning at a hundred percent and like all out and and getting my way? I don't know. I mean, I I'll be the first to say that, you know what? I get frustrated and I get angry at some of the things that happen and and they I overreact sometimes and then I'm definitely a culprit of that. The um, but I'll also be the first to say that, you know, if you guys want to work together on stuff and you really want me to understand the perspective that you're coming from and why you want to achieve some of these goals or some of these projects that you're working on, I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to take the time and and hear what you have to say and look at it from your perspective and and find a mutual ground in the middle so that we can do something that's better for everyone. And then I'm hoping that you guys will be too, because I don't know how much longer we can continue to see what's happening here in the division that's taking place in our country and our communities without it over without it boiling over becoming something much worse that none of us want to see. And I'm concerned and fearful of that. We're leaders. I think we can make a difference and let's start with us, so. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. But I agree with you. Anything else? Councilmember updates? Well, we did this pretty fast tonight, folks. So uh, Kathy Kerschner.
Yeah, I want to thank Tyler and um I'll let you all know that I'm sorry for the um response that came into all of your inboxes. That really was a response to me about me, so I do take responsibility for that um for what happened here today. Um, and I say I appreciate your words, Tyler. Um, I do want to make, I want to move on to a different topic and I want to make sure the transition is clear so that I'm not inviting more criticism, but um on my uh Zoom screen, I've got Rudd and uh Executive to Do side by side. And the whole meeting, I just keep thinking that Executive to Do with the cowboy hat. You should be in Rudd's picture with his beautiful background scene of the mountains and the uh the prairie. So I I just wanted to leave you with that and um and say, and say thank you to Tyler.
I, I just want to add that actually I think that's an Australian hat, so really I should be wearing it.
I'm not quite sure what it is, but I like it. Have a cross between Paladin and Zorro or something. Okay, everybody. We'll see you in two weeks. Yes, Executive to Do.
Yes. Well, let's clear the hat controversy first. You say Indian hat. How about that? Uh, I I really appreciate Tyler and uh what you said and I think it is very important and it can start at our county level. And uh, you know, for 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 everybody's benefit, Tyler called me last Friday. We we talked for about an hour. And uh, and it doesn't mean that we have to agree with everything. I would really like to make another request, appeal to all the council members that please, uh, like I said, when I started this job, that I want to be open. I want to be uh approachable and I want you guys to be approachable. I would like to reach out to everybody, like, you know, every two weeks or it doesn't have to be be set if somebody likes to like uh uh Rudd has uh set up a series of meetings already on my calendar. And uh, and I have tried to reach to everybody else uh because we are two different branches of government. As much you guys can cooperate with yourself is important, but I think that as administration and legislative branch, I would like to make, keep my offer open and I would like to appeal that please reach out to me. I am willing to come to your home, to your business, to your work or to my office, wherever it is possible. But let's keep talking. I think good things will come out of that. I'm not saying that you have to agree everything with me or I have to agree with everything with you. But I think the more dialogue we have, better understanding we have of the subjects of under discussion as well as what we can do together for our community during each of our turns. And I really appreciate Tyler, you bringing it up. Thank you very much.
Moves, Frazee.
Yes, Tyler, thank you for that. And also Kathy, to own something is really big and I think we all, we're all gonna make mistakes along the way and to own it and to say it. Thank you for that. And um yeah, we're not gonna agree all the time and most of the time, but uh if we can have, keep the dialogue going and be an example and speak our truth, but then when we do make mistakes, say, hey, I made a mistake. That's really, that's really powerful, so thank you for that. Let's, I'm looking forward to we're gonna have some tough times ahead and just getting through COVID and after, so we are gonna need to keep that conversation going. It's gonna be really important for the community. So thanks for that.
Okay. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I was jumping in and thanking both Kathy and and Tyler and and I think the crucial thing um, first of I I've always felt that even with those on the council that I, that we, I have had a disagreement with on both, on both sides of the political spectrum at times. I I've always appreciated the um willingness to li- listen and the um civility. And I think the, the thing that we have the ability to control in from, from a public di- dialogue perspective is the civility with which we treat, treat each other, particularly in public. I think that's the best example we can set that we can control.
Okay, everybody. Have a good couple of weeks and we'll see, well, actually we'll see you next Wednesday or next Tuesday at one o'clock, actually in the morning, ten-thirty. So uh have a good weekend and we'll see you then. We are adjourned.